Chairman on April 24, 2023, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Public announcements, Mr. Hagerty?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just have a couple of public announcements. Just a friendly reminder to Abington residents and voters, there is a town election coming up on Saturday, April 29th, and it will be at the Beaver Brook Elementary School from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
Eight.
Please come out. Eight, eight PM, sorry, sorry about that. Eight AM to 6:00 PM at the Beaver Brook Elementary School. And then I have just two more announcements, Mr. Chairman. Since 1970, the National Autistic Society in the United Kingdom declared April as Autism Awareness Month, and today, the message of acceptance, education, and embracement of loving people and children on the autism spectrum is celebrated worldwide. The autism spectrum is a neurological and developmental diagnosis that affects social skills, speech, obsessive interests, nonverbal communication, learning skills, and repetitive behaviors. According to a CDC study from 2021, roughly 1% of the world's population is autistic persons, over 75 million people. We dedicate every April to autism as an opportunity for each of us to learn and champion for our friends, our neighbors, students, loved ones, and even ourselves on the autism spectrum. To learn more about autism and how you could guide someone you love who is autistic, go to nationalinstituteofmentalhealth.gov. In celebration of autism awareness, the Abington Police, Fire, and Highway Departments are hosting the first annual Autism Awareness Touch a Truck event this Sunday, April 30th, at the Beaver Brook Elementary School from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. This event will be sensory-friendly, thus no lights or sirens will be activated. This free, family-friendly event will include police cruisers, motorcycles, Abington Fire Department trucks, better see you on one mic, DPW vehicles, and more. The event will include meet and greets with police officers and fire personnel to familiarize children with emergency responders. The annual Autism Awareness Touch a Truck event is an opportunity to bring the community together. Under a non-stressful circumstance, so individuals on the autism spectrum can meet first responders, build relations, and above all, enjoy the day. Save the date this Sunday, April 30th, at the Beaver Brook Elementary School from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM for the first annual Autism Awareness Touch a Truck event. As an elected official in Abington who was diagnosed on the autism spectrum at nine years old and is an autistic person, from the bottom of my heart, I want to thank the Abington Police Department, Fire Department, and the Highway Department for joining together to bring this inclusive event forward in a valiant effort to promote autism awareness and acceptance. I am immensely proud of Abington. Thank you. And in conclusion, in honor of Autism Awareness Month, I'd like to conclude with a quote from my childhood that continues to inspire me and I hope will inspire my fellow autistic brothers and sisters to always believe in yourselves and shoot for the stars. It's by Mewtwo from Pokemon the First Movie. "The circumstances of one's birth are irrelevant. It is what you do with the gift of life that determines who you are." Happy National Autism Awareness Month. And lastly, if I may take a point of personal privilege here, I just want to thank Selectman Mike Colajay for his service to the Board of Selectmen. He is out, he's, next week he will not be on the board, but he has done a tremendous job serving the town of Abington and as he continues to do on the Abington Fire Department, saving lives and protecting people. It's been an honor to serve with you, Mike, and I treasure our friendship, and I know you're gonna do, continue to do amazing things for this town.
Thank you, Alex. Appreciate it.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Kevin?
I have nothing.
Tim?
Alex stole mine. I just wanted to thank Mike again for his commitment over the last three years. It's not an easy thing for us to sit up here and, sometimes can be thankless, and Mike, you know, ran for Selectman during a pandemic, and I think it was six months before we actually met in person, when he came on the board, so it was extra hard, and I know it takes a lot out of you, so Mike, thank you to you, your wife, your family, for all they've given. Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Klose?
All right. Absentee ballots for the annual town election Saturday, April 29th, 2023 are now available at the clerk's office anytime this week. If you are unable to attend the election, you may request an absentee ballot or vote early. Please provide an application or a note with your signature. Requesting that ballot be mailed to you in mail to the town clerk, 500 Plinowitz Way, Abington, Mass., 02351. Reminder, postcards will not be sent out. Any questions, call 781-922-112 or email L-M-A-D-A-M-S@abbingtonmass.gov, or again, go to the clerk's office anytime this week. And finally, I just want to thank everyone for their support over the past three years. It was definitely a pleasure serving everyone, and I hope to see you all soon.
Thank you. And I just want to thank Mike Klose. We got on the board together three years ago. I was hoping he would decide to run for reelection, but he decided not to. But I'm sure there's some things we'll, you're not going away.
No.
Mike's doing a write-in campaign, I thought.
What's that?
Isn't he doing a write-in campaign?
I actually had a nightmare last night, Kevin, I'm not gonna lie. I got elected without a vote, and I couldn't get out.
Oh, Jim Conley did.
Yeah, that's true.
And I had to tell Courtney I'm stuck for another 13 years. I woke up in a cold sweat. I woke up in a black skin. It was awful.
Well, thank you. We do appreciate it.
I'll make sure to write your name in, don't worry. You gotta vote.
The public appointment at 6:35 was not properly advertised, so that will be postponed until May 8th. So at this time, I would take a motion to approve the minutes from April 10th.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Adam, if this is okay with you, I would like to take Acadia Manley first, if that's okay.
Agreed.
All right. This is Acadia Manley, she's Eagle Scout, and you're gonna show us what you're doing for your project.
Yes.
Why don't you just state your name and address, so all the people at home know?
Okay. My name's Acadia Manley. I live at 1180 Washington Street in Abington. I'm an Eagle Scout. I've been in scouting BSA since 2019, when girls were first allowed to join. I've been in two troops. I've been in Troop 22 in Whitman, and now I'm also in Troop 41 in Abington, which I'm very excited about. I started my project in September, and I finished it in March, just three days before my birthday, which is coming really close to the deadline, but I got it done. So it was actually six months exactly to when I got my project plan approved, and then when I ended up submitting all of my paperwork to actually have my project approved, which was pretty exciting. My project had three pieces, which was the town website here, which is, includes the, all of this information about all 15 service members killed in action who are buried in Mount Vernon Cemetery. Each of the service members has their own separate webpage where you can learn about them and see pictures of them. It also, my project also includes an interactive map of the cemetery, which you can pull up on your phone, and it will connect directly to your Google Maps, so you'll be able to actually see how close you are to the locations of the graves, and you'll be able to walk right to them. And then you can also click on each individual grave. It's the same information that you'll find on the town website, and most of the same pictures. I think a couple of them didn't transfer over, but you will see all the same information here, so you can go to each of the graves and see them. And then I also have a sign which I installed in the veterans mound of Mount Vernon Cemetery, which includes this map and a QR code to get to the website. So if you go into the veterans mound, it's right at the flagpole, and you'll be able to go there. So I thought this project was really interesting. Originally, I got the idea from, I think it was, we were at Memorial Day, and someone had mentioned putting QR codes on every veteran's grave in the cemetery, so that when we go around and do, put the flags on the graves, we can make sure that we're getting everyone. You can like scan the code and check it off. But then we realized that there are over 700 veterans in the cemetery, I think, so that was a little bit too big of an undertaking for only having six months to finish the project. So we moved on to the 15 service members killed in action, and then it became not 15 separate QR codes, but only one central QR code, because some of these service members, like Private Chester L. Belcher, died in 1918. So being able to find a family member who's going to sign off on having something placed in the gravesite was gonna be, again, a little bit too big of an undertaking for six months. So I'm really proud of all of the stuff that I've accomplished. You can find this on the Abington website, if you go to the Veterans page, and then I'm the top one on the blue over there. Abington, K-I-A, buried in Mount Vernon Cemetery. There's a lot of information on here. It was about, I think it was like four months of research before we started on the website and everything. I put a total of, I think, 150 hours into the project myself, but when I went to my Board of Review, I was talking with the people who were reviewing my project, and they gave me like a stern talking to and said that I definitely underrepresented myself in my hours. So it was probably, he said, I probably put a good 70 extra hours into this, so it was probably more like 200. But what I had recorded was about 360 hours total for myself and volunteers and anyone who helped me with my project. I had people help me with research. I did a lot of my research in the school library, just online. I had, at the school, we have a thing called Bridge Block, which is a period where you can pretty much pick a class and go there. And so every Friday, I went to the library, and our school librarian is also the leader of our NHS, and so she was able to help me organize a group to come and work with me on my project. One of the interesting things that I found in the school library was school year, old school yearbooks. And so for people like Charles Bellas Jr., I had like, he was voted most carefree in high school, and he wrote for his school arts magazine. And so this is a short story he wrote about the dangers of forest fires. He also wrote in his yearbook that he wanted to be an Alaskan forest ranger, which I think is an interesting aspiration. He was a part of a whole bunch of clubs. And so I thought that was sort of really interesting information to find and be able to like humanize and like these like heroes to our arts town, and see that like, he was like, he was a teen once, and he played intramural basketball and things like that, which I thought was really neat. So yeah, I had a lot of information. We did research at school. We have databases through the school, so we were able to do some research through that. And then towards the end of the project, I went to the Dyer Library with my mother and two of my Scout Masters from Troop 22, and we were able to go through all of that stuff, where, that's where we found most of the Service, Veteran Service Bureau like enlistment records and stuff like that. But we were only able to find those for service members who served in World War I and World War II, because the Vietnam records haven't been released yet. So that was sort of, one of the hardships of the project was being able to find information for people who served in Vietnam and Afghanistan. But luckily, with those people, they're very well known in our town. So we have like Daniel Vassiliyan and Richard Fitz, who, there's a lot of information about them. But then there were people like Jeffrey Phipps, who I had very little information about. So some people in this project, there's a lot, like Charles Bellas Jr., Daniel Vassiliyan, and Richard Fitz, have, you'll see their pages are a lot longer, and then some of them are only like a paragraph, because that's the only information I could find. It was very based on what war they fought in, if their census records had been released, if their enlistment records had been released. So some of them are a little more detailed than the others, but I'm pretty proud of what we've been able to get research-wise. I have my email down the bottom, so if anyone has any extra information, I will always add it to the project. Even though I've aged out of Scouts, I think this project is, safe to say, it's gonna live on for a while. I know that Reverend Christie Coburn and Adam were saying that they wanna continue it and add other service members who maybe aren't buried in Abington or didn't, weren't killed in action, and so I'm very excited to help them with that when that comes up. But yeah, that's the gist of what I've been doing. If you have any questions, or if you'd like to see more of it, I'm happy to show you.
I'm very impressed.
Amazing.
Really.
This is incredible.
Thank you.
You did a tremendous job. That's awesome.
I can't wait till I'm lined and start clicking.
I know. There's, there's a lot on here, and I think it would take a while to get through all of it. But I had a lot of help from your-
No, we get time, let's go.
If I'm only one of two, I need to go.
They don't want to hear from the other one.
But yeah, there's a, there's a lot on here. There's also a lot of pictures with Richard Fitz. I actually met with Vicki, who is, was his wife, and she came to my fundraiser to buy the stuff for, to build the sign. And she, well, the first thing she did was, she called me to say that I had spelled Sergeant wrong, which I truly believed her, but then I realized there's like two different ways to spell it, and one of them used to be used and is no longer used, and she was going off that one. But I thought that was kind of funny. And then she, at my fundraiser, she gave me this picture, which I love. I think it's a great picture. And she said this was how she remembered him, and so I wanted to make sure that this got on here.
It's very, it's very real.
Yeah, that was him in his helicopter, so he actually died in a helicopter crash, but-
That was the last picture they took of him.
Oh my goodness.
Wow, I didn't know that.
Then it was found later, many years later, and was given to his son randomly.
Wow. That's awesome.
Wow.
Yeah, these are my personal heroes. I'm a big fan of theirs. I lived with them for about six months, so I'm a big fan of them.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Now we have to listen to you.
Yes.
Follow that.
I'm sorry in advance.
And it's a funding request.
Oh, boy.
Acadia, it's really remarkable and truly incredible what you've done. I mean, I think it's, it's an amazing feat to be able to bring, you know, somebody's history alive, but it's another thing to be able to paint a history, a piece of who they were, and also be able to put that into it, not just who they were as a hero for us, but who they were as a person and keep their memory alive, so great job. Excellent work. I'm here today to propose the creation of the Abington Advisory Council, the Abington BSO Advisory Council. I would like to propose, we had, create a council with, excuse me, my glasses. Five members of the council, all appointed by all of you. The recommendation is for myself to reflect the total of the veteran community members. I would love to have the membership be open to not just veterans, but anybody. I'm looking for people who are, have a heart to serve veterans, to serve and help widows. The meetings would be held in a consistent manner, the same way with the other committees. Right now, we currently have more projects, research, and widow and veteran support that we have hands for. We're starting to see more requests from Abington low-income veterans and widows on Chapter 115. I'm grateful for Martha being here part-time. With the most recent PACT Act that came out in August of '22, we've seen a huge increase in VA claims through my office coming forward. Just to kind of double, to talk about the PACT Act a little, it's the new law that expands the VA healthcare benefits to veterans who are exposed to burnt pits and Agent Orange and other toxic substances. It also expands healthcare for those same veterans, but more importantly, for one of the projects, it adds 20-plus presumptive conditions. So if we have somebody who served in Vietnam and they died, they were exposed to Agent Orange, and they were exposed to, and they died from one of the 20-plus conditions, their widow, if they're not remarried, can get financial compensation for the rest of their life. Their real estate taxes are 100% wiped clean, thanks to state reimbursing the town back. There's education benefits, there's possible healthcare, there's, I mean, it can really change lives. We have a volunteer right now going through the death records. I'd like to go back 30 years, but this is a big venture to go back and look and find all the veteran death records. It tells right where they served. You flip it over on the back, and we can look at their cause of death. I guarantee, there's numerous widows out there still here in Abington who aren't getting the compensation and the support they need. So we have somebody going through one day a week, through the death records, but we need more support. We have the, we get a lot of fun projects in the Veterans Office. We get a lot of calls for support, for random needs for veterans, for widows who just have nowhere else to turn or refer to us. Two weeks ago, we got a phone call about a, excuse me, a Korean War veteran who had fallen, and I went out to the house. They were on a walker, they're homebound, they needed a new walker, they needed a new recliner. We threw it up on Facebook. It was shared. Ellen Delaney found somebody who commented on there. Next thing you know, she's calling me, and she was able to take the veteran, bring him to the furniture store. We had a, Susan Harris, her father was a Korean War veteran, she bought the veteran a brand-new electric fully recliner from Wellington's in Rockland. And we get projects like these all the time that I just don't have the hands. We need more people, more volunteers. For instance, the BSO Advisory Council, the bylaws, the application, everything was done by Pete and Janice Walters. It's volunteers like them that allow me to do these type of projects. So thank you for all that you guys do all the time and checking in, helping me out. But we need more help. We have, I'd love to work on the Town Veteran Mailout Survey, that'll help make communication with a younger generation of veterans that we're not reaching. The only way is to get something in their hands and to show them to the website, give them a survey, have us get that content information. We have a new metal fidelity now that's out for vet, for widows of veterans who died from service-connected disabilities. I'd love to see someone take that project and have maybe a huge ceremony here to honor those widows who lost their spouses by proven causes from the military. We have the Free Veteran Widow Medical Transportation Service. We've got the vehicle so far. There's, there's a lot of steps to getting that in place, but I need more hands and feet to make that happen. I'd love to schedule an Honor Guard training so we can get Abington's police and fire back in the Veterans Day parade. We just need more hands to make these projects happen. I could go on and on about different projects we have, but we just need volunteers with people who have a heart and compassion to serve others. Looking for people who can hear my ideas and give me mentorship and guidance and critique them, something that you guys do all the time for me, so I appreciate your help. You know, same thing with you, Chris, downstairs. I love running my ideas by others, but we have so many opportunities that can really change lives. If you're willing to give the time and be a part of the committee, we approve it. Have any questions at all? I definitely talk more than you, Tim.
So what do we do to get this going?
So you want, I'm sorry, Adam, you want five people, five-person advisory, all, all term, one-year terms? Do you want it staggered?
Staggered would be, I think I had-
Yeah, you have it here. Each term initially would have a one-year term of membership, which would then be staggered into a two-year and three-year terms.
Thank you for that, Pete. Yes. And Janice?
Yes. I mean, there's a lot that can be done. I mean, I don't know what the beginning may look like as far as meeting and how often, but you know, once we get the ball rolling, you know, on a monthly basis, there's a lot of things that we can do to impact lives and help others. I have pending your approval, I have the application completed, prepped to be released on the website, and they can go through right on the website and apply, fill out the form with all the questions, and rack and stack the applications, and hopefully we get a lot of people that want to support veterans and widows.
So this will be a separate application than our normal, but it'll be found in the same spot on the website?
Right on the, right now I have it unpublished on the Veterans page. BSO Advisory Council, it may be unpublished.
I think it's great. I think you covered everything here, too.
We would, we would put it on-
Posted on the UFA as well.
Yeah, on the regular one, too. Yeah.
I may have, there you go. So I think I just made it public here. So I have the description. Thank you, Tony, for setting this up. Have the advisory, the statement, and then we would list the names here, and they can fill out the application form right on our website. Can change it to add somewhere else.
Well, Adam, with the presentation that you provided for us, I think this is definitely a much-needed thing, much-needed council in Abington. And I think perhaps we have a, an excellent candidate for the council, Acadia. Hopefully, you'd like to join on to this, if this is something we approve in a matter of seconds, you know? I think this is something that would be perfect. Again, I can't say this enough, you did a tremendous job with that project, and it's seriously, I mean, I, what you've done for the veterans and their families, I mean, I think this is great. And not only that, but like you were saying before, how this could be a model for the future, you know, for the Mount Vernon Cemetery and just, and keeping people informed and spreading the history and celebrating our heroes, so.
Thank you, Alex.
Yeah, no, I think this is absolutely fantastic. I'm in 100% support.
Do we need anything for this, or?
I think you need to, yeah, a motion.
Motion to form the council.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So we will get it up on the website and advertise for 30 days, I think.
Yeah, sounds appropriate.
May 19th is the Friday before, unless I have to advertise for the full 30.
Yeah, we put it up there for at least 30 days and take it from there.
I would think that it'll fill up quickly.
So, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Adam. Thank you.
And now, the moment we all wait for every week is the Town Managers' Report.
Thank you for that intro.
Yep.
So I've drafted the letter to the MBTA General Manager regarding the findings of the TRAF Info Railroad Grade Crossing Study. You guys have a couple of copies, one on our letterhead that says draft. The other page was submitted by Selectman Hagerty with some edits that he'd like to suggest. But, you know, basically, this, we'd like to, with your permission or at the conclusion of this meeting, I'd like to forward it along to- to the General Managing and CC, our Senator Keenan, Representative Sullivan Almeida, the MBTA, the new MBTA Safety Chief, Lavin, the MBTA Board of Directors, MassDOT Board of Directors, State Auditor, DeZiglio, and
DeZiglio.
Anyone else that you would like to add to that?
I think the State Auditor, we've met with her. So she definitely is expecting something.
Yes.
I wouldn't have a problem sending it to the Governor and Lieutenant Governor also. They might read it.
Yeah, I, you know, again, I think the more people that see it, maybe that'll get somebody's attention. But I will let Selectman Hagerty point out what his suggested edits are.
Sure. Yeah, no, I, just a couple of tweaks. I took out just a couple, a couple of sentences that I thought would either repetitive or just, just so we can get the point home to the MBTA General Manager. And I also underlined a couple of things to really make it a point. I moved one sentence around where it was regarding, I felt, because I just feel that this is so important. According to the report, and this is what I sent with, to everyone here, according to the report of the 700, the 751 railroad grade crossings in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Abington's North Ave and Burt Street crossings are in the top 20 of the most dangerous crossings in the state. And I just, I kind of moved things around just so it was clearer. I'm not, I'm not criticizing you, Scott, but I'm just saying, just for clarity.
I'm fine with it.
Because I think the, the best, if, sending this to the MBTA General Manager, I think it would be best that we have this basically a general, an executive summary, so we can really hit the points home. I did send an email before to you, Scott, and to you, Mr. Chairman, before this meeting, that I was bad, I was racking my brain. I think we should include in this letter, granted, it will make the letter longer, but I think it's important that we include all the recommendations that the consultant gave to us.
I'm going to attach.
Oh, I understand. I understand the report, but I think it would, it would just, in my, in my profession, working as a secretary for, for the administration, in the administration, I think with a letter like this coming from us, and then sending the report, obviously send the report. But I think in the, in the letter would be more impactful if we include all the recommendations in this letter.
I don't think they'll ever get past page one, to be quite honest.
If I was the General Manager and I got this, and if I, and I got this letter, and then there was, you know, a 60-page report, the General Manager might not read the whole report. So I think it would be important that we get everything that we want out of the report, out of the consultant report that we got, you know, and presented to the MBTA.
We could also do a footnote on here saying, see pages 1, 5, 10, 15 of the report. That way, they go directly to the recommendations.
But I just think that it would make it easier if we just put it on the letter.
If we make the letter too long, then we risk them not reading it.
I already think, yeah. I think it's already at that point. So.
I like the changes you've made. I think that adds a little something to it, Alex.
Yeah.
But I just, I don't want to take away from it by too many words. You know what I mean?
Well, could we maybe just add one page and just highlight these other recommendations and
Well.
And include the report.
The biggest, the biggest thing from the, the report that we got was, they wanted us to hit on home with north, the repair, you know, improvements for Burt Street and North Ave. That was the biggest thing that they said. If there's anything that you do, you, you need to fix North Ave and Burt Street.
I'd like all the fixes done.
Oh, I know, I know. But I'm just saying.
Why those, you know?
Exactly.
I mean, I think, I think you're right, though. I think we leave it as such. I mean, I think it's more, you know, impactful like this.
The other thing that Scott and I talked about when he was doing this letter is, if we make it too long, like you said, they're going to read the first page and that's going to be it.
I mean, both of them have already flown us by.
If they read this letter, and your letter is fine with me.
Yeah.
They're going to contact us. And hopefully, we're going to have a face-to-face meet, meeting. And then we can go in detail with our recommendations. I think if we put too much in now.
Well, and that's why what I sent to you earlier was that, you know, a happy medium here, where I really drive it, you know, highlighting the, because we, in Scott, in your letter, you did, you did put down the, you know, the safety improvement recommendations for Abington's crossings of the MBTA commuter rail include signaling solutions, signage, updates, reduce train speeds, and more. And then that's where we could probably include, Kevin, pages. So of the report.
Yeah, see, at that point, say, see page 13 to 19.
12 to 19.
And then, I mean, your letter, you're asking for a meeting. So at that meeting, then we can go into more detail of what we're looking for, I think. I just agree that we don't want to, we don't want them to just put it in a pile. We want it readable. I think your letter is fine, Alex, and we could go with that. And then just add in those items that we just said.
All right. So let me, I'll make those changes right now. So after, on my letter, reduce train speeds and more, I'll put in parentheses, see, report.
Pages.
Pages 12 to 19.
I believe it's 13 to 19, but I'll make the changes and I'll put it on our letterhead.
Okay.
And then I'll leave it out here.
Did you send this as a Word doc to?
Yes, I did.
Yeah, okay.
So what I, so what I sent, so what I sent to you guys was a Word document.
Okay. So is everyone in agreement with that?
Yeah.
And we'll get that.
I'd like to invite them down, other than just ask them for a meeting. Come down and see it. I mean, I think that last, that we would be pleased to schedule a meeting needs to be a little bit stronger. But
Yeah.
You know, I mean, they
We request that you schedule a meeting.
I think we'd take a
On-site?
Stand, yeah.
Should we add, I know I just spoke for five minutes about not adding, should we add, maybe with a meeting and walk, walk around or walk through?
A site walk or something.
A site walk of
If you could word that somehow, Scott, that we want to
It's pertinent to this dangerous situation.
Not that we please, but almost, we don't want to demand, but we request a meeting.
Well, not please.
This is, this is long overdue.
Yeah. We request a, a meeting with you or your staff.
And encourage you to come down and do a site walk to see the dangerous conditions.
Yeah. Okay.
I get the gist. I'll whip something up.
Are you sure?
No.
So is that good with everyone?
Have Nancy call you guys when she does.
Everyone good with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. So
Thank you, Alex.
I'll get it redistributed for one last look before you come by and sign it.
Okay.
And I'll have everybody, all of your names will be on there for signature.
Okay.
Terrific. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Thank you, Scott.
Thanks.
Oh, and wait, there's more.
Back to the Town Manager Report. It's not done.
Oh, there's more.
Wait, there's more. All right. So May 22nd, we'll mark the final day of Chief John Nuttall's tenure as Fire Chief for the town of Abington. So in preparation for his succession, I am conducting interviews tomorrow afternoon. We have two in-house candidates. Assisting me in the endeavor will be retired Whitman Fire Chief, Timmy Grenow. Both of the candidates have recently gone through the Assessment Center through civil service and the state HRD. They both scored well, exceptionally well, and they both have extensive experience with the town. So I think it'll be a tough choice to make. Again, both great candidates, but I will make an announcement by the end of the week. We'll be starting the Job Classification Compensation Study this week with Gov HR. We have approximately 100 different positions, 100 positions, or 100 employees on the town side. So as part of our mission to get our personnel policy done, we need to get our job descriptions done. And then obviously, we want to make sure that, you know, our compensation plan is in line with step, with towns around us. And we have electric vehicle charging stations installed in the town hall side parking lot. This was funded through a state grant and some use of opera funds. As soon as they are fully operational, EV owners will be able to find their locations. Apparently, they all have apps that help them locate these and find out what the prices are. When we set our rate, it'll be consistent with EV charging rates in the area. The money will go into the general fund account for now. We may look to set up some sort of special fund account so we can take care of any maintenance expenses, software upgrades, software license agreements, stuff like that as we go forward. So anybody with an electric vehicle?
That's it? That's the whole report?
Would you like me to?
No, no, I'm good with that. So anything else?
Mike?
Good night, Gracie.
A motion to adjourn.
Mike, you want to make a motion? Make that motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mike. Thank you.
There you go.